One nation under God, in the name of this God, and in the name of the justice of God.
Thank you.
Sheriff, want to open us up tonight?
And my father, thank you for this day. Thank you for people of Antrim County. Thank you for the talents and abilities that they have. Pray that you would be with our new deputies and officers as they wrap up their field training, head out onto the roads, pray that you would keep them safe. Pray that you would cause them to be at the right place at the right time. There'd be citizens in Antrim County that need assistance, of help within an emergency. I also pray that you'd be with our elderly, those who are in Meadowbrook. That you'd give them health and strength. Pray that you'd be with this meeting. Give us wisdom. Pray that you would give peace, especially between Russia and Ukraine. That you would cause this conflict to come to an end. Give us a safe trip home. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Sheriff. Uncle Carl, uh, bro, bro, call Vicki.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Eller.
Here.
Commissioner Scola.
Here.
Commissioner Rubin.
Present.
Commissioner Van Alstine.
Here.
Commissioner Hecker.
Here. Thank you. Uh, public comments, she's going, and we'll wish the guests.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Sherry.
Morning. My name is Sherry Knight, and at this time I would like to call Deputy Charlie Farrar, Sergeant Frimosier, and Deputy Adam Parent up here with me. I would like to recognize these guys for a job well done. On August seventh, Deputy Charlie Farrar was on duty at the Antrim County Sheriff's Department. While performing his routine cell check, he saw an inmate unresponsive. He immediately requested for Sergeant Mosher to respond to the cell. Her fists were clenched and her eyes were rolled back in her head, and she was not responding to her name. They immediately contacted Central Dispatch and, um, Charlie Farrar retrieved a box of Narcan and adminis- administered a dose of Narcan. After the initial dose, a sternum rub was performed. She became minorly responsive and another box of Narcan was retrieved. A second dose was administered. It's still only minorly responsive. A third dose of Narcan was again administered. The nurse arrived on scene and a fourth dose of Narcan was administered. At this time EMS arrived at the Sheriff's Department and Deputy Farrar escorted her to the hospital. At the hospital, she signed a waiver that she refused all medical treatment and they released her back to the Sheriff's Department. On the way back, she became unresponsive again, so they pulled over to the side of the road and the ambulance was again called and she was taken at this time to Munson Medical Center. Um, Charlie Farrar was relieved of his duties around eight thirty and returned back to the jail. And Munson Hospital re- released this inmate at one thirty in the morning. So Deputy Parent was on duty that next morning, the following morning. And when he responded to her cell, she, he observed a small plastic bag in her sink. And she be, she started showing signs of distress and became unresponsive again. And she was administered another dose of Narcan and the hospital was called. He took her, he followed her to the hospital and they released her about two hours later back to the Sheriff's Department and she's still in custody today. So I would like to present them all with a life-saving award.
Good morning, everyone. Helps everyone doing today.
Morning, Sheriff.
And they asked.
Don Holt, Antrim County Sheriff.
Hope they are Angel.
Yeah, come on up, sir. Jeff Fletcher is one of our newest deputies with Antrim County. He's in his final stages of field training. Doing a fantastic job and, uh, he, uh, he lives in our community, so I welcome Deputy Fletcher. Thank you. And this is Angel Shoud. This is Angel Shoud. Her first day is today. She is one of our newest dispatchers. And, uh, she, uh, she comes to us. She originally came from Manza Long. And I believe Trevor said you're living now or?
Trevor said.
Okay, very good. So I welcome Angel. She is not new to the law enforcement world and, uh, she's going to do it extremely well. So thank you for choosing us.
Yeah, thank you.
We're going to, uh, our, uh, our staff to, uh, to the board and obviously to the public. So I have four more deputies I want to introduce, but obviously they're not working today. So, but thank you for your time.
Thank you for introducing us all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public, any other public comments? Okay, moving on, uh, can I get a motion to improve the agenda, please? I'll make that motion. Second, I'll score. Discussion. All was favorite PCI, uh, anyone opposed? Uh, minutes from August twenty first, any corrections?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve events, please?
I made a motion.
Also, one time, if you supported any discussion on those, all of that, you say I.
Yes.
In our one votes, uh, any, uh, these are our committee reports. Okay, uh, no one can finish business, uh, new business. I get a motion, uh, to approve plan to the house in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. The answer is that's a motion. I'll second that motion. Any questions on those? Sheriff.
Number fifty-two and fifty-three, they're both with SD. Let's remember what that was. Sheriff's were able to publish things.
Anything else? Number five, uh, Patrick, uh, oh, Sheriff, so it's Sheriff's, right?
Yeah, that's fifteen addresses. Those are not, that's not a single address.
Okay. All right, yeah. Okay, you second all, please say hi.
Hi.
I know, of course. Uh, what about ten little reports? We have Paulus here. I know Amy's here as well. We, uh, Commissioner Angin, um, talked to us about, uh, Spanish services presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. Jeremy, your little slideshow you're gonna put on. I'm here this morning, um, seeking your approval to move forward to trying to raise some funding, um, for this proposed adult day, but before we kind of get into that, I wanted to give you an overview of the work that progressive companies did with, um, the Commission on Aging with the county, with many leaders throughout, um, county to kind of really discuss what really is the need for this type of program and the needs for the Commission on Aging going forward. And I think that they did a really good job with their visioning session and really helping people understand what the growing needs of older adults are. Um, I think most of us probably can relate to having a family member who's lived a good long life, but maybe at the end of their life at some point, um, they might have developed some dementia, Alzheimer's, and as we all know, that can create a strain on the family because they're really trying to keep them in their own home and providing those support services, but the need for respite, to get a break, is a growing, growing need in our society. And so an adult day service kind of program is a really efficient, effective way to provide those services. And currently at the commission, we have a waiting list for that. It's not huge, but I think if people were to learn about a program such as this, it would be utilized, um, for four hours a week or forty hours a week, depending on what the need of the family was. And, and just this morning, I got an inquiry, actually came in a couple of days ago and I was answering her. Um, I was away and, um, new to this community, to Valera, and she said that her husband has Alzheimer's and she was reaching out to find what kind of services we might have. And so I did tell her about Raspus, but it's hard to really provide that kind of service efficiently and effectively because you got to send somebody on a one-to-one for four hours a week or something, which is hardly any relief at all. So, um, Jeremy, you got it up here, don't we? So we did, um, go through the visioning and we have reinforced, um, what we already have discussed before here. Um, we need to, um, obviously find funding to do this project and to engage stakeholders, grants, those kinds of things. Um, currently the Commission on Aging, we're certainly meeting, um, and exceeding, um, the needs of our seniors in our current space, um, to provide all of the other services we, we give such as foot care and tax preparation and just a lot of things that we do and each and every day, we're kind of on top of each other trying to provide these things as well as activities. We see, um, within thirty-six months, we probably have a high utilization of the rest of the the personal care, like bathing, grooming portions of an adult day. But what I want to point out to you is there are people who do need the supervision provided in an adult day, in an adult day kind of day program. But then there are so many others in this community that are living in housing that really to try to get into their bathrooms to give them bathing and showering. It gets very difficult because they're not handicap accessible and it's very hard work for our caregivers. So we'd be able to actually provide some personal care services to people. Again, efficiently and effectively in an adult day kind of setting, but not all those people would need all of the services. So we see this as dual purpose. We would be having, um, our current congregate, uh, seniors that already come to us and if you've been over at the center, you'll see that we're kind of busting at the seams with the programming that we're already providing with, uh, meals and activities and whatnot. But we'll be able to use this new space if we should be so lucky to get it for both the congregate and the adult day people. Again, this would be a reason that people would want to maybe relocate to our area, such as a lady that just got in touch with me today, new to Valera. And really the, the capacity of, um, the adult day space within this um, program addition, we could take here up to ten, twelve people at a time or probably thirty at any given time, because like I already explained, I'm not always there at the same time altogether. So, um, and then we, uh, did, um, work out a proposed probable cost of this and, and a schedule. So, so this is the configuration that, um, we all came up with together. Like I mentioned, we did involve a lot of key stakeholders in the community to give their insights about, again, the need of this type of a program. What is the, um, kind of spatial need for it? And, um, what would this look like and how could it attach and where would we drop off people and all of that? And we had some really good input. So this would be the basic space. And then also how it would, um, attach to our current building and there would be a drop off like in the front and it would be large enough for ambulances as well as the bus and it would be more safe than we have right now. I think if you're over there, you would see that the way the traffic flow goes, it would be very easy to hit somebody, um, the way that it is. And so it's been thoughtfully, um, thought out to kind of, um, make it more safe from a traffic perspective. And so this would be, um, a block drawing of how we would, um, envision. So you would see that in a lighter blue area, that would be the space for the day. And then the darker blue is our activity area, which would be dual purpose with, um, our current, um, seniors who use the setting now. We would have a, in a red, it would be a place for like, um, flu clinics and shots and foot care and any other kind of, um, health types of, um, support that we provide people. And then in the yellowish area, that's a dual purpose room for like the healthcare counselors, staff counselors and those kinds of services. And of course the gray black is existing and that's just, uh, okay, Jeremy. Um, a picture of what it might look like if we were to design such a building. So I think that, um, the progressive company really did do a good job with us with, um, engaging stakeholders and coming up with a proposed schematic. We did, um, have them give us, uh, estimate a probable cost. Um, the first time they came to us, it was a little bit higher than we would have cared for. So we sent them back to the drawing board a little bit and made some refinements. And so at this point, we're really looking at a three to three point nine six million dollar project, which I know is a little higher than we had hoped for going into all of this, but as we all know, after COVID, things had more than doubled in terms of, uh, construction. So I think given all of that, um, we've done a good job with sizing and, and really just trying to be effective about what we're doing. And, um, at this point, I know that we would need to raise some funds and some grants and all of that. And adding the adult day, um, concept to this type of program, it really helps us achieve a few things. Number one, it is, um, state of the art in terms of what's being provided, um, to adult in older communities. And it's a more effective way of providing our services. As I already said, you know, when we stack one-on-one, we have the travel time, you have the time in the home, um, for a bath or a shower alone. That's more than an hour um, once a week for the clients. And perhaps we could group some of these people and have their caregivers out to do these things in the center, even if they don't need the whole adult day supervision part. The rest of it right now, it's one-on-one, four hours, you know, once a week, which is very expensive and the travel to get to different. Which is very expensive and the travel to get to different, instead of economy, I mean, that takes a lot of time, so. We really could, um. Use our our resources more effectively and that's suggesting we won't do some of the home in the hair, you know, here in home or rest, but but. I think we could help a lot more people. And, uh, do it for, um, about the same kind of staffing costs, so. So that is, um, where we're at and I have been in touch with. Some local funding organizations and I reached out to other people trying to get leads on. Um, other kinds of federal grants, state grants to. Become interested in such a program, you know, I have a few meetings set up, um, with people to get some consultation on. Perhaps a capital campaign. Because I know that as a county, we don't. Have the dollars to to invest in this, we have some fund. Balance in the mission on aging. To show, um, our part, but I, um, believe that with the help of the AAA and some of the contacts that. We've already made, we might have opportunity to try to get some funding for such programs, so. Start there and see if there's any questions.
Thanks, Paul. Questions?
Sure. Yeah, I'm just curious, do you have a rough idea of? How much money would come out of the COA funds allowance?
Well. I'd love to see that limited, we have at this point, Jeremy, but, uh. One million or so.
No, it's, it's probably eight hundred fifty.
Yeah. So. Obviously we have that there, but our goal would be to try to seek. Funding and grant dollars to minimize the use of that, but we we do have that there to be able to help support. But at this point, I'm not really proposing a number because I think we have to see as they're funding out there available.
Cause, uh, I've I've had some constituents that are not in favor of this and. They. Especially with their support of the COA relationship, the COA knowledge is going to be used for adult daycare, then they're not in favor of COA building anymore, so. You know. This is what it is.
We have a unique county here geographically, um, and you mentioned travel and and points of accounting, um. Can you comment about? And maybe a challenge that we will face, uh, and I'll pick on myself, uh, you know, Bell Rapids down, you know, Rapids Township. Southern Elcrappes Township is a long ways from Bel Air. Um. And I'm gonna pick on Ray too, for, wow, uh. North, uh, northeast, uh, border township is a long ways, always from Bel Air, how how do we address that concern that? I'm only gonna get my dad to this.
Sure, you know, we've had, you know, some discussions with the transit about. This very thing and the way that I envision it is, you know, maybe, um. We can give some rest that a day or two a week by sending transportation out there and trying to serve. The people there and pick them up at their home and and come in. And again, that would be another way that we could look into funding to see if they can help us support such. Um, transportation, I'm not saying we have it all worked out, but but I think you we could group. The different. Portions of our geography to try to again be more efficient about transportation. And try to schedule them together, perhaps to provide some of their rest, but.
Well, I could get a little bit of input on this too. Um, at the COA meeting, the Board of Advisors, we we had a discussion with the Andrew County Transportation. And Christine was going to start looking at a program to do. A pickup like as where we'd say. Elcrappes area, they would make a sweep and pick up people that needed to come into COA for. A bath or whatever, and then after it was done, COA would take and make it like a school bus route. Make a road, a loop and take all the people back home with you. And then that was, that was amazing that she had that plan already developed and brought it to COA. And was telling us that this is something that they believe that they'll be able to do, so. Think that'll help a lot with your area and Bill's area both that will be able to offer that to pick people up, so.
You know, I can understand your concept, not only just for adult day, but we could pick people up to come in for meals, which right now. Because of transportation, some of those same people are restricted to come into the. Different congregate sites.
Just curious, approximately, how many people do we serve in their homes right now?
Yeah, we have, um. Both the homemaking services as well as the personal care and so I I think together about sixty.
And and I have, uh, my constituent, his wife has pretty bad dementia and, uh. He's indicated that. Anytime you take her out of her, out of the house, she gets more confused and it just. She's up for most of the night then and he just doesn't see that this would be. It would be, it would cause more problems in the end than. I mean, he he could really use. Break, but. You pay for it afterwards.
So I, I'm not gonna say that isn't. True of some people with the dimensions, like then there's others that would. Actually do better in such a facility socially, so I think you got both, and I'm not saying we would stop. Providing in-home care or rest, but I think we can help more people. By having them in a congregate kind of situation, but I'm not saying this for everyone. So you're right.
There was a question.
So we're not. Committing any money right now, so I mean, we're letting her explore. And it's something we need to look forward to, we keep saying that our county is either the older or look to the future of the company, um, so. I'll make a motion. That, uh, we allow to authorize direct county administrator pursue the next phase of Michigan agent. The solely which will include developing a capital campaign, pursuing grant opportunities to help finance projects.
I'll say, I'll second, I'll second the motion, any 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 further discussion? Chairman.
Yeah, just, just a comment that. Time, energy and effort. By administration. Is money, titles money. And we got a jail project going forward, we got. We're not gonna take care of everybody all the time and. It just reminds me of my six-year-old. I ask him to set the table. Put silverware on. He starts going to the kitchen to do it. Oh, I'd like you, I'd like a glass of cold water. He stops midway to the kitchen, what what is he supposed to do, is he supposed to set the silverware or is he supposed to get a cold glass of water? I I think we're. Are we gonna focus on a jail or are we gonna spread it out and we're gonna try and do everything and? I just don't think we should be directing our administrator to do that at this time.
What is that say about this?
Uh, will be more work, yes, uh, but. We have a strong team, Paul comes with a lot of knowledge and experience, um, I'm not. Concerned about. About, uh, taking multiple projects, we do that regularly, um. And I, as always, I may do, no, no, no matter what, but the, um. The opportunity to. For me, it's a, it's a big opportunity when when, uh, this was originally brought to me. Don't increase staff. Still provide in-home services and actually open up the opportunities for those that can't leave. While also providing not only for the people that part of the waiting list. But a additional services, so it. Not to mention the the massive opportunities for investments from from state for grants from, because this is the. This is the trend, this is. We're, we're at the point where this is where what everybody's pushing for, because they do see it as the most efficient way to provide these necessary services. Um. So. To me, it's worth it, uh, and and we'll make the room.
Yes. Okay, I do have a motion inside. What, Brad's got, yeah. Part, so, um. I agree with Jerris in a way, I mean, we're talking about a public safety center. We also have the, uh, the Beller Dan issue that. That's, that's a huge priority, so we're gonna be dealing with that. Um, we talked about the ACT boss and, uh, you know, I had a reminisce thinking about, uh, GTI, how. Uh, you know, they get. It's just. Know the clients for GTI, they get a discount from ACT, however, it's still, it's. Discussion's not enough, um, and it's, uh, it hurts GTI, you know, their bottom line. Um, I also have never had a constituent in my district talk about, uh. Adult daycare. And. And I'll say this too, so I mean, the far east side of the county. If. hypothetically, if somebody had to take their loved one to, uh, to Bel Air. Uh, most of the people on the far east side of the county, Gaylord is closer than Bel Air, you know, and most people do their business in Gaylord, and so that. That just doesn't work out for them, so. But I I I'm, you know, I'm in agreement, I mean, I think it's a, I think it'd be a wonderful project, I'm not, I I. And then I look at the cost, it's the high cost is three point nine six million. And I'm telling you, as the sun comes up, it's gonna be more than that, I mean, there's gonna be at least ten percent cost overruns, um, and I. I understand that. Uh, maybe the money will be raised because the taxpayer shouldn't be out the hope for this. Um, that's just, that's my comments. Thanks, Rick. The other conference. Vicki, I'm gonna ask for a, a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Michelle Helwood.
Yes.
Michelle Dan Olson.
Yes.
Michelle. Ruby.
No.
Michelle Skol.
No.
Michelle Jeffrey.
Yes. Thank you, um. Do we add, um. Uh, still Christian identity, authorization to sign standard contract for services. Looking for a motion authorized, Christian agent director, that's seen standardized contract services for Christian aging services as meeting.
I'll make that motion, I'll support.
Okay, with the supportive questions. All of them, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, next, uh, promotion does the trade to mutual assistance agreement, the promotion authorized share assigned mutual assistance agreement of village of Bel Air and those. Similar with other law enforcement agencies for interagency audio visual port.
Like a glass of port.
Fuel to support questions. I do have a question, yeah.
Approximately. We have an idea how often this service is gonna be utilized. Uh, I'll use your better question, please share. I mean, this is gonna be for villages. Yeah, this is already happening, it's just a matter of people. Paul.
Yes, I've, I've resolved, it depends on how many individuals are gonna interview. Because when you start getting into felonies, you have to have a recorded interview. By statute, so it all depends, sure, um, so how many have you done in the last six months? Uh, we've had roughly, roughly probably three, three individuals that need to be interviewed from different departments. So. If that helps.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Karen, thank you. The other questions? All of them, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed, thank you, uh, housing, um. Oh, no, sorry, thank you, I'm looking for a motion, that is our Rapids memorandum, understanding for motion objects, chair to sign a rule. I'm around of understanding that our happens for the walk, that the Elcrappes day party.
I'll make that motion, I'll support.
Okay, supportive questions? None, all of them, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. Uh, housing north letters for, no motion authorized chair to sign letters for an app for commissioners for the housing north application, the Michigan office of rural prosperity, rural readiness grant. They're over at.
That's a big one, yeah.
I'll make that motion, I'll support. Okay, group who supported questions? Jerson.
Yeah, just, just a comment, I guess, housing north has had meetings in Banks Township in the past and. Township supervisor were terribly impressed, it's been, they're not happening anymore, so I'm I'm not favorable.
The other conference. Thank you, Jerson.
Definitely.
Okay, Vicki, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote for that one as well, please.
Michelle Man Austin.
Yes.
Michelle Skol.
No.
Michelle Helwood.
Yes.
Michelle Ruby.
No.
Michelle Henry.
Yes.
What you pass. Um, uh. We're going, uh, about special points, uh, now freedom of interpretation of appeal. Uh, denial of random from Jeremy, Jeremy, on the summer.
Yes, uh, our policy has an appeals process and which, um. Uh, anybody denied a lawyer can appeal to important commissioners first. Prior to, uh, putting this in a certain court, law allows them put it certain court, our policy allows, uh, some. Um. The, uh. The individual did not feel like it, uh, fit the, uh, requirements, we reviewed it again, looked it over, discussed it. And it absolutely fits the conditions in our opinion.
Thank you, I made the motion to hold the disclosure denial as indicated, our back end, full support, everybody has some questions? None, let's, all of them there, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That takes up, I believe, right down to Jeremy's report, uh, any questions for Jeremy?
I'm one of those film. They're coming up, they're here, um, they're being installed as we speak, definitely see that, well, so. Sure, since you were, there was a, um. Couple that didn't make it, but, uh, that's been out. So.
Um, questions, checks.
Number five, Michigan indigenous defense. Any, any further update on that, uh, not so far, um, it's been, I mean. One of those that just. Tends to drag out, I mean, it seems. It should, but it doesn't.
Uh, Jeremy, thank you, one of them, Paul, thank you for coming up with, can I traverse industries, any other specifics you'd like to provide other than what's in your memo?
Um, yeah, I mean, it doesn't look like a lot has changed since the board was last updated, uh. Uh, a lot. The concept of a, uh. A, um. Resolution of support has been approached and, uh, I was working with GTI's director to. Get something for the board to next be. Because in any case, the North Country can get email house interpretation of new rules are the GTI must. Must change how they work with their clients and are qualified. That's how the position is, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh. Chairman's report, I I, um, I just want to mention, uh. This is just, uh, please give some thought to, um. Us going to, uh, board of commissioners going to one meeting. Um, I'm sure there's pitfalls and challenges to that and, and please just give us some thought. It's just a random idea that I have, I'm motivated solely by trying to save a couple of dollars, um, and that's what I'm doing. I suspect that there's challenges, I suspect there's, uh, major potholes that I hadn't thought of, um, so. Any ideas on that as we move forward here on the next round, so I appreciate feedback, I think, I appreciate Jeremy, I give you feedback. Let me, uh, let's see, uh, Jason, any last comments, Jerry?
Great.
The result, Jers. The final public comment today. Okay, that's it, uh, for Jeremy's order to share, very much.